Ethnic groups of our community could, in addition to single parent homes due to a divorce, who may want to keep children in the Mount Pleasant School District that they're currently in, as well as younger families who are just starting to find their first home. Is it fair for me to assume that a patio home is an affordable housing option as opposed to a larger lot with a larger home? Is that a fair statement to assume?
Well, Mr. Schindler, I don't know what they're planning to, the sales price for these homes. I can certainly speak to respect to what their lot size is for rezoning, but other than that, we don't, you know, dictate what size the home is on the lot. I mean, there needs setbacks and that's certainly not, I wouldn't know about the cost.
May I ask, the developer, would he like to comment on the homes? That just, any information that may be helpful for me in my decision making?
The initial thinking is somewhere in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for these homes. When you're working on a project, if you base the price of a house, it's also based on how much the land costs to get it to that point. When we do, I would say you are accurate. If you do less lots of a larger, the land costs the same, so you have to make it up in charging more for the lot. Because you charge more for the lot, you have to charge more for the house. Yes, so it doesn't actually.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Mr. Carach?
Can we get a, can we get a site map? Does everybody already get a site map up on the screen?
You want the actual conceptual plan, is that what you want?
Most colorful one you have.
Right there. Is that, is that the one you want?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And then to orient you with that rifle range, rifle range is on the top, and then six mile here, town's facility is, is every town's lane.
How far is the access port into this neighborhood off of rifle range road from six mile?
I can't tell from that.
That's all right.
It's not too near.
About three hundred and fifty.
I figured it had to be at least three hundred to be able to signal that right? Yes, sir. And this, this stub here to my left, that butt's up to, what's that butt up to? That's not our property, the town's property, is it?
This one, our property's a little bit further down. This is still a different vacant piece here. We, as part of the process in working with staff when they were creating the conceptual plan, tried to make sure that they provided the number of opportunities for interconnectivity for future development.
So what's the thought process of the applicant or developer to simply stub that road and the road below it, and they'll just be, they'll just sit there, wait, houses on your side?
I'm sorry, why, that the stub will just be there?
No, that's just going to end like it is, to go up to the property line.
Yes, sir.
That, that top left and that bottom right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carrier?
Very tough decision for council. Very tough decision for the commission and planning committee. I've struggled with this for a while, and, you know, you've got fifteen willing property owners in this area who are willing to sell their properties, knowing that they're in a sweetgrass basket overlay, knowing they're, they're restricted by how much they can get for their property, and it can convert into a develop. In other words, a developer's not going to come in and do it if he can't make some money. It's already been said that he's going to have to spend a significant amount of money just to run the sewer. But very tough decision, because I've walked the property, and, you know, the nice thing about the property is that it really does have two accesses. It has rifle range, but it also has Hungry Neck Boulevard, which hasn't even yet been extended yet. It's just, it's a real dilemma, because it's an improvement to the area, but I go back to the original statement I made, that you've got fifteen parcels, fifteen property owners who've lived in that area probably for a very long time, and they're willing to sell their property to improve their state. So how do we handle that? Do we put aside the comprehensive plan for this development and say, yes, you can do a four point two-three units per acre, or do we hold to the three per acre? A matter of one point two-three per acre. Now, it's a real, it's a tough decision, and, and I know council's going to probably have to be called on this as far as individually, but don't think badly of anybody who goes either way, because this is a real, this is, you know, we've got, I, I don't know if Brad would concur with me, but the traffic doesn't seem to be a problem here. You've got a couple of other little subdivisions along the road there, um, down from where this comes out, also having access to rifle range, but to me, it's not as detrimental as if they wanted to put it down in Hammond. But anyway, that's where I'm coming from. I just think everybody should think real seriously about the intent of the property owners versus, and versus what can be improved here. And I don't think we're talking about a big difference in three per acre and four point two-three. Now, I know that's a different stance for me from when we met as a committee, but I've looked at it hard, and, and I'm just, I'm really torn. So I don't know until you call my name there, but what I'm going to do.
Thank you for that, Mr. Carrier, I appreciate it. Ms. Thompson-Stokes-Marshall?
Now, I know we're talking about fifteen parcels of land, right? Total, two of them, and the other thirteen. Okay. The total number of parcels, are they owned by one person or several different persons within a family?
They are, they're various property owners.
Can you go back to that map for us? The parcel map?
Here's one more. Just laying just now, but I believe that maybe it would illustrate the best. The properties that are being aggregated are outlined by this sort of greenish color right here. It is, it's fifteen separate parcels, different property owners, maybe not for each and every single piece, but for the number of.
Okay. The other thing is, in terms of the impact, the cumulative impact for that area, we've got Oyster Point that's coming on board, we've got Palmetto Fort, we've got the town property, we've got two new schools that's coming on. Rifle range is not going to get any wider, neither six mile road is going to get any wider, all right? So there are going to be additional impacts to the thoroughfare for those two roadways. And also, you know, with all the comments that I've heard my fellow council members make, with all due respect, you may or you may not know that this property, like much of the coastline from Delaware down to Florida, is within the Gulligici Heritage Card Commission, which was formed in 2006. The purpose for that commission is to protect and preserve the Gulligici communities that's within our geographical area. Moving forward to implement these changes and do away with the sweetgrass basket overlay, it takes away from all of the efforts that's been put in, not only by the Gulligici Heritage Card commissioners, but also, I mean, the town, the residents who have worked to develop and implement these policies and memorandum of agreements. I, I just cannot step totally away from that. I just want to put that out there and share that with you all.
I appreciate that, Ms. Stokes-Marshall, and as we move forward, I mean, it is a hard decision for council to make, and as mayor, I can tell you that the budding residents seem to be fine with this development, and it is against the comprehensive plan, and the challenge as a mayor and a council is, our comprehensive plan is tied to many things. It triggers schools, it triggers transportation impact, and it has a long-reaching effect on our community. That being said, you know, can you change the comprehensive plan every time for every development? No. Is it a pick and choose? Well, sometimes you have to pick the benefits, and you have to weigh the benefits against the disadvantages. And I think in this case, Mr. Habersham, I believe, said it best. We have a strategic plan, and that is to aggregate properties and increase service efficiencies. This developer has come together and aggregated properties, increased service efficiencies. So there's the challenge. You applaud the hard work that he's done and disrespect, so to speak, Ms. Stokes-Marshall, the work of others who've tried to protect. So is there any more discussion? Mr. Carach?
I was just going to say, I've, I weighed it all. I wanted to get some, a little bit of clarity on, on the difficulties of the planning commission. I understand that, and I read the minutes of the planning committee, and you can see everybody's torn, but I, I've weighed it. I've been a part of all those things Ms. Stokes-Marshall just mentioned in my previous years on council. But I can tell you, council, we've just given first reading the annexation of a piece of property, therefore, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of first reading of item number four. Do you mind the, the comment?
A second.
For a motion and a second, but for clarification, Mr. Pagliarini, I know there was, as the motion was made in the planning commission, for a point of clarity, is, is it best to take this individually, one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Let's call for the vote. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Mr. O'Neil?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Garage?
Aye.
Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mayor Page?
No.
Back at three.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero zero four, in order to amend the town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan 2009 through 2019, future land use map pertaining to fifteen parcels of land located in the vicinity of Harry Robinson, Robinson Road from Community Conservation to medium density neighborhood.
Okay, moving along, item number five.
Move to first reading, let, of item number five?
Second.
A motion and a second, call for the vote.
Joy, what clarification? I thought we just did it.
Really did one. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Garage?
Aye.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mayor Page?
Aye.
First reading, ordinance number one four zero zero five, in order to zone thirteen parcels of land, RPH Patio House Residential District, and rezone two parcels away from TMC Community Conservation District, and SBOD Sweetgrass Basket Overlay District, RPH Patio House Residential District, for a development to be known as Six Mile Subdivision.
Thank you. Final item on this issue is number six.
The impact. I, I do have a question on that. Just clarity. Mr. Morrison, you impacts, transportation-wise, you see no gain of impacts that would appear at the signalized intersection at the request of eighty-two centimeters.
It will still function and acceptable over service.
And there's no issue with either a right and left-hand turn on the rifle range road or on the six mile from the two points, right hand, left hand, same. And this sidewalk that's going on, it'll be on their property, the right-of-way, and it'd be five foot wide?
Would be in the right-of-way. You may want to clarify further. I know that there was some discussion at the Transportation Committee regarding improvements for pedestrian facilities on rifle range, and there was consideration of eight feet. It wasn't necessarily related to this project, but I just pointed that out.
Ms. Farrell, you knocked it out of the park, playing softball. That's where I was going with this. This is an opportunity, it was mentioned before. These guys have done a heck of a good job of bringing all this property together, but we are dire need for pad bike access, start from here on up, and to do that properly, I would suggest it'd be at eight feet, not five feet. Is that something that's going to be, I mean, is that, is that, is any issue with that, including that in a motion for approval of item six?
I don't, I don't think so. I would just suggest, maybe that could be, if you all also wanted to consider the staff recommendations, which would include, for example, the making sure that that sidewalk extends all the way to this corner, because they own this piece of property, and then there were a few others, making sure that there will not be direct access to any of these lots onto rifle range road, let's see, and then to work on lot, this lot right here with respect to the trees.
I would include, I mean, move forward, I would definitely include the comments of staff on that. Like, I mean, the only condition that I would place, and I, I have to say this, because, Brad, I know you don't know, there's eight feet in the right-of-way, get us in a situation in the future if we want to, you know, rifle range road could possibly be wide in three lanes. We do know that, one day.
Probably in certain areas where you're going to create intersections, but probably not by higher length.
Right. What I would, if you go from five feet to eight feet, without hindering rifle range road widening there, it could become a disapproach to the intersection.
I, I think we could work with the developer, you know, he has designed it, but I, I hope that we can work with him, and even if that required some productivity as far as easement dedication or something like that to get the eight feet, I, you know, I, I would hope that they'd be able to work with us on that.
Well, I would, I'd move the first reading of item six, impact assessment, to include all the staff's comments, as noted, that you changed the sidewalk from five feet to eight.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just, just.
Mr. Smith?
I'm going to let you finish your thought there, you're writing down. Ms. Farrell, if I may, on rifle range road, did the staff comments include various visuals or not sight lines? Did you say sight on rifle range road, line of sight for the backup addressing barriers or some kind of buffer? Buffer's the word I'm looking for.
They have to be.
Right, so that, so we're not looking at athletically, at something that's going to be?
Well, they could certainly put a fence up there. There's, there's a number of developments on rifle range road that have a fence going, well, down rifle range road, but with respect to placement out there, it couldn't be any kind of line of sight on the complex.
Mr. O'Neil?
My questions were regarding that for any on rifle range, too.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes carried?
No.
Uh, note one, no, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Number seven, first reading?
This item is a request to rezone from R2 Low Density Residential to R3 Medium Density. This is a point three acre parcel of land, designated at seven.
Move for a reading, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes carried?
First reading, ordinance number one four zero zero six, in order to rezone from R2 Low Density Residential District to R3 Medium Density Residential District, and approximately point three zero acre parcel of land, known as Lot 93, Mount Pleasant Pights, located at 744 Atlantic Street, identified by TMS number five three two zero six zero 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 nine nine.
Item number eight, first reading?
Actually, item is eight N. It's okay, we address those together. One is the plan development request, that is item number eight, to amend the watermark plan development to allow garage repair uses on this property located on Stewart Ingalls. Item number nine is the corresponding development agreement amended. Amendment, both have been recommended for approval.
Move first reading of items eight and nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm just making sure Mr. Pagliarini and Mr. Nichols are okay, the fact that you were, that's a Fifth Amendment ordinance? Just kidding, guys, y'all looking kind of tight. It's probably a little tight tonight, try to loosen it up.
No tightness here. And I'll take that.
We have a motion and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes carried?
First reading, ordinance number zero five zero five two, in order to providing for a Sixth Amendment to the watermark plan development district zoning ordinance. First reading, ordinance number one four zero zero eight, in order to providing for a Fifth Amendment to ordinance number zero five one zero nine, the development agreement binding between the town of Mount Pleasant and Beach Shellpoint LLC Watermark Development.
Thank you. And last but not least, number ten, under new business.
This is a, it was a text amendment. This was actually in front of town council in November, but was sent back to the planning committee for further review and discussion for sixty days. When planning commission looked at this originally in October, they did recommend approval of the tax amendments. Then at the January meeting, the planning committee did review in that the proposed amendments to the sign ordinance, and I will give you a very brief overview of those, what particulars of them, and if you have more questions. First of all, this would be to include wayfinding signs within shopping centers to Dr. Pilot program for wayfinding signage on Coleman. Should have higher standards for aesthetics and to add photos to the ordinance illustrating such. Collar buildings will be allowed signage on the first floor, very similar to a shopping center, but then the anchor tenant could have signage higher up, higher placement up on the building. Corporate symbols and signature elements must be counted towards signage. These were the things that they were recommended by the original sign committee, recommended by the planning commission, when reviewed by the planning committee, how the planning committee had to put vote, and therefore do not have a recommendation on the proposed tax amendments.
Thank you for that. Any discussion?
Question. We're at first reading here. If we're going to make changes to this proposal, when are we going to make those changes?
I think we would.
For any part of what you just said, of any of the four or five areas of concern regarding sign?
I think that you would, you could go ahead and discuss those further, and then the first reading, that would be prior to the final reading?
Yes, sir. You could obviously approve this as is, deny it as is, and request it to be brought back in a different form, or you can approve or, or vote for first reading, but any amendments would come at second reading. However, I don't think there's anything prohibiting at this meeting from requesting, at least that perhaps legal planning looking to certain questions or issues that need to be addressed regarding potential changes.
Well, it's been kicked around enough already, and nothing much has been done, and if we're going to have an effective sign ordinance, we've got to make some changes. Now, I didn't think we would get to this far with making those changes, but we are, we're here, at first reading, so, you know, I'm ready to make some changes on a, on a couple of areas, or at least some investigation into a couple of the areas. But now, we're not going to sit here tonight and do all that. That's a committee-type of assignment, and we haven't been able to do that yet in our committee, in the planning committee, or in the committee, the community committee that was assigned to do this. But we knew that the community committee really didn't do much as far as the areas we wanted to see changed, so if it's up to us, and we, and we ask for it to be up to us, we're going to have to sit down and make some changes, if it's the will of this body. So where do we do this? How do we do this is now the question.
I think for clarification, like Mr. Pagliarini says, we can amend it now, we can prove it as it is, we can ask for more clarification and discuss them later.
Well, I hate, I hate to do that, because maybe not all of our council is up to the speed on what we're, areas we're talking about, and how detailed this can get, and how many people it can affect in our community as far as business. So I, and I don't want to kick it back to the planning committee unless we're willing to take it on and really do some serious work with it.
I appreciate that.
And I defer to my chair on planning.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Now, I believe the recommendation that came out of the sign committee, I think that those recommendations are where we want to go, where we want to be. I would suggest that we consider approving those recommendations that were provided by the sign committee, and then let's go for the first reading, and then if there's any changes that you want to make after the first reading, we can do that between this month and next month, and then come back and amend, make the amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, with all due respect, the ad hoc committee didn't make any recommendations as far as the areas that a couple of us would like to see changed, and until we really discuss that, I don't think we can do it in, in this format, myself.
I'm saying, okay, then, I think that we can do that at our planning committee next month, and make a recommendation to amend after the first reading, the second, for the second reading.
Okay, if we can do that, if we can have a working, do that in a working situation, and everybody be geared up to make the change.
Because I think it's probably only one or two areas that most council members would just like to get some additional information concerning, and we can look at addressing those issues or concerns at our next planning meeting, and then be prepared to amend it at the second reading.
I'll go along with that, as long as we get to do some serious work on it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, a couple things. First, to all sign committees, council, commissions, citizens, and others, God bless you, because glad, strangely enough, that that was one that I didn't get tapped into, because that's a, that's a tough call to duty right there. I'm wondering, the town administrator, pretending to spot a little bit here, but why not, can tell us, give us, what's the current term, the thirty thousand foot view of what item ten is about? If I was a citizen and I walked in tonight and heard that last conversation, I think the citizen would say, they're talking about signs, it sounds like they're voting on something. It sounds like somebody on the council doesn't think they're going maybe far enough in a certain area. To me, I'd like to hear a little bit of the, the overview of what it is that's before, maybe, maybe you can do that. I don't need to go out way into the weeds, but what is before this council tonight? And what is, why is it on our agenda?
Well, sir, issues relative to signs have been around for a while, and it seems about every two years, there is a request by some interest to amend the sign ordinance, and what has resulted over the last few years are several amendments to the sign ordinance, I forget how many. And after being, I think council reached a point, in my opinion, where perhaps it was time to take a more global view, a global look at the sign ordinance, you know, look at it in its totality, and, because some pieces of it do impact others. So that's what, that was the genesis of this special committee, if you will, to look at it. And I was able to sit in on many of those meetings, and it, for a long time and often, and it came back with some good suggestions, I think most people agree with, like the internal signage, as Ms. Farrell had mentioned, in commercial areas, the Coleman stuff. It was obviously some desire to clean up, if you will, the use of A-frames in the community. And I think where we are today is, the ordinance in front of you captures a lot of those things. But my, my observation is, it's been clear that there are some, Mr. Carrier mentioned it, that perhaps we'd like to see this thing go further.
Well, and I appreciate that big overview, but I guess where I'm coming from, Madam Mayor, is that I probably am in the same place that the mayor pro tem is on this. I think it's time to move this ball forward. My gosh. And if it gets moved forward with first reading tonight, I hope we do, then those, like Council McCarter and others, who think that there should be some additional detailed tweaks, certainly have that opportunity, and we could talk about that in February. But, but I'm inclined to, let's move this thing forward. And I'm also reminded, by the way, that if we make bad decisions, and government does, we could come back and amend the amendments and change the ordinance and all that. It's not written on a tablet, thank goodness, and there could be unintended consequences in here, but let's move this ball forward, let's let people like Council McCarter and others, the D. Let's let people like Councilman Carey and others, the deep thinkers on this particular issue, bring us some additional tweaks and let's go. I think the folks in our town are, I know I am, I'm fatigued by the A-frame signs. I mean, it's amazing to me.
Is that a motion?
A plea.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. And I want to take a minute to tell you, four years ago, when I first called council, the first thing we did is have a sign committee. And we had a big sign committee. And we talked about signs and trees, and we changed the sign ordinance, and we changed the tree ordinance. And, you know, we were trying to make it business friendly. The problem is, is we were in the height of a recession and we had a good ordinance already. And we have a good ordinance now. Some of it's enforcement, some of it is, you know, is helping people. I mean, you know, the people who are using those A-frame signs, they need those A-frame signs. So it has to work together. We were going to increase, we were going to increase interior signage in shopping centers with directional signs to help people be easier found, so we wouldn't have to have sandwich boards. We wanted those to be more uniform. There are areas of town we can use them. And they're, they're kind of willy-nilly. Some are nice looking and some are not. So we wanted to have some uniformity. The other issues that we haven't talked about, or have been talked about several times, is digital signs. You know, and we can talk about it, and we can talk about it openly. Do people in the community want digital signs? It has been part of every discussion we've had. And it's not in this part of the first reading because we decided it might be such a big issue that it needed to be on its own with public input and let the citizens of the town direct us better. This particular ordinance is to clarify the A-frame issue. It is to increase interior signage. It is to help with the non-conforming signs that need repair but don't have to go to the expense of replacement for a business. And starting wayfinding program. And I think all those are very worthy to be moved forward. Ms. Stokes Marshall.
Thank you for that very good description of our sign ordinance as well as the recommendation. And with that, I'd like to move that council approved first reading of this ordinance and direct the town's attorney to prepare an amendment that provides for limited digital off-premise signage for council consideration at next month's meeting. And we can put that on our planning committee for February to come up with the recommendation as to what will then be brought to full council at the February meeting.
Do we need to clarify?
In attendance with the planning committee? Will he be working with us to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As long as he's working with us and we're part of the same team.
It will have to be.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can you restate the motion?
Okay, move the council approved first reading of this ordinance and direct the town's attorney to prepare an amendment that provides for limited digital off-premise signage for council consideration at next regular council meeting in February.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And an added note to that is that we will address this at our planning committee meeting in February.
Ms. Garten.
My question, based on that motion and second, because I just heard we're ready to move forward. Everything about that excluded digital signs.
That is correct.
And, and just so I'm clear, let's make sure everyone understands there's a difference when we say digital sign versus digital billboard.
Right.
Two different things.
And at the intent for this item to be on the February agenda is to get clarification and answer all those questions that anyone would have.
I would really strive to ask all of us to keep them separate. I really would. That digital world, I can, I'm ready, I'd be ready to talk about digital billboards and do something. But I, there was a reason why the digital signs which came up, I don't know where they came from. That's okay. I got an open mind, you know that, Ms. Stokes Marshall. I'm listening, but I think we go to great lengths to make sure they're separated. So what I'm, what I'm.
Okay, let's go do away with the signs. We're going for the billboard. And that's what we want to address, okay? Does that help to clarify?
Yeah, if you just.
For clarification, I think he's asking for you to amend your motion. And for further clarification, if you could amend your motion to take care of the first issue and then make a motion to address the second issue, I think it might be clearer.
Is that what you want?
Direction.
I didn't want, yeah, I didn't want digital signs or digital billboards tied into.
Okay.
That right there.
I'll amend my motion.
And you amend your second?
So basically, you're, you're asking for the motion to approve first reading for item 10?
That is correct.
Okay. And that does not include digital signs or digital billboards?
That is correct.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, he's amended, and we have amended his.
I'll keep my second on that.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, amended second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
First, may I do the first reading? First reading ordinance number 13076. An ordinance to amend chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant code ordinances pertaining to the division thereof regulating signs.
Okay, now, I'd like to make a motion that we, through our town attorney, to prepare an amendment that provides for limited digital off-premise billboard for council's consideration at next regular council meeting.
One second.
Okay, and we'll have this item placed on our planning meeting for February.
And my question to that is the understanding then, Mr. Pagarene, is that you going to find out what it all, what all's involved to have a digital billboard in this town?
Yes, sir, including procedures as to what items, if any, we need to take back to the planning division.
Very good.
If that is appropriate.
Thank you for that, Ms. Stokes Marshall. Point of origin.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Does the motion include signs as well as billboards?
No, it does not.
It does not. It's just digital billboards. Okay, so we have a motion, second, and we have a question for Mr. Smith.
I'm just struggling with the one word limited. What's the intent behind limited? I just, I, um, Councilmember Carrick mentioned earlier that he has an open mind. And I would just hope that all of us have an open mind going into a discussion. And including the word limited just concerns me a little bit and gives me a little bit of heartburn because it is not, it's the opposite of open.
Okay, can I elaborate on that? The only reason why I, I would consider it limited is because I know initially, quite a number of years ago, we didn't have a digital sign ordinance. And when it was brought to council, council voted at that point in time unanimously based on the feedback that we got from our residents. They did not want digital billboard signs throughout the town, okay? Now, I mean, let's be realistic. We're into the 21st century, and I'm sure as we revisit this, we recognize that there couldn't be significant benefits from a digital billboard for all of our residents. Let's say in the event of an amber alert or emergency evacuation, there are good things that, purposes that it could serve, all right? So that's why we are revisiting this. And with us revisiting, it's not going to, we're going to plaster the town with digital billboards. It may only be one. We may decide on only one.
Thank you for that, Ms. Stokes Marshall. Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, and I appreciate the mayor pro tem's comment because no one should walk away from here tonight thinking the town council just approved digital billboards all over the place and go place that on Facebook. I think the intention here is that there's going to be a discussion.
Exactly.
And we've asked our town attorney to start with the basics, like what's the legalities involved these days and all that. And there are, I too carry an open mind on this one. There is a cost and a benefit analysis that we need to look at. I don't think that this council, at least I hope not when this comes up in the future, is going to be in favor of plastering digital billboards all over town. But there might be a section of town where one or two. To that discussion. I am quite convinced that the default setting for most people who don't sort of delve into this is not going to be positive. I mean, if you put it out on Facebook tonight, who's in favor of digital billboards? I don't think the poll numbers would be that great. So it's going to take an education component as well, as a lot of things do. And I hope that we get into the education component. I'm reminded that. Access to a billboard to folks and businesses who might not otherwise have access due to the fact that it changes and so forth. And it does allow us to get information out to citizens in a whole new way. And if it's done properly, cautiously, and in a, in a very narrow way, it might be something that we can support. I look forward to the planning committee's recommendations in that regard and our town attorney giving us all the legality stuff and a robust discussion next month and into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. And Mr. Smith, would you like to add something?
Madam Mayor, just one more point of clarification. In the recommended ordinances that we voted on in the past, and I'm asking this question because I may want to ask for an amendment or a second proposal in respect to corporate emblem. Christine, in our motion, we are now reverting back to the previous laws that were regulations that were on the books which would eliminate corporate emblems or would require them to go towards their signage. Is that correct?
Yes, they would be counted towards their maximum allowed amount of signage.
Correct. So the spirit and concern which I have, we talk about our interest and desire to move into a significant economic development perspective. But yet we're going to go back to old ways of doing things. And PF Chang's, I guess, is the most familiar exit. So that would not be allowed under the current ordinance that we just voted on. Is that correct?
Count toward the signage.
Count toward the signage and could potentially eliminate that being the way that it is currently. Is that correct? So I just would advise council to make sure that we're, we're thinking about this from a holistic perspective in terms of recruiting businesses and corporate emblems and logos. And perhaps I'm the sole member of council that is not offended by the horses that are part of the corporate emblem and logo that brought that wonderful restaurant to our communities, improve that site. I'm just concerned about that, Mayor, moving backwards, not forward in that one incident.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I really don't see it the same way. I mean, we allow them to have it. It does count towards their signage. They have obviously very large horses, but they also have other signage. And I think everybody knows it's PF Chang's. Moving back to the other business, we have a motion of second on the floor. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Glass, I'm sorry, I did not see you.
And maybe I missed the second motion. Is that, we had a motion on the sign ordinance that was approved unanimously. And there was a second motion, which was just to direct staff.
Second motion was to separate out, I asked Ms. Stokes Marshall, separate out just the digital billboard.
I think Councilman Garitch properly didn't tether the two together so that one didn't, for some reason, we didn't drag the whole thing down. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're all good. Thank you very much. Moving on, all business.
This is final, first item is final reading for the Bell Hall Plan Development Ordinance before property on Wando Park Boulevard to allow for mini storage facility.
Move the final reading second.
The motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This final reading, ordinance number 13078. An ordinance providing for amendment to the Bell Hall Plan Development District pertaining to an approximately 1.5 acre parcel of land known as track C1A1C located on Wando Park Boulevard and identified by TMS number 537000246 by adding a mini storage facility as an additional conditional use on the parcel and providing conditions for the same.
Item number two.
Actually, item number two and three both pertaining to the same piece of property, 916 Wando Park Boulevard. First is to begin the comprehensive plan for economic development to medium density residential. And the second is to specifically allow for duplex residential uses on the same piece of property. Obviously, both have fresh re.
Move the final reading, items two and three.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any items?
No.
No, one no, sorry.
Final reading, ordinance number 13080. An ordinance to amend town of Mount Pleasant, 2009 through 2019, future land use map pertaining to an approximately 1.0 acre parcel of land known as lot 5, track 12C, located 916 Wando Park Boulevard and identified by TMS number 540000152 by changing the land use recommendation from business light industrial economic development, commercial land uses, medium density neighborhood land use. Final reading, ordinance number 13079. An ordinance providing for amendment to the Bell Hall Plan Development District pertaining to an approximately 1.05 acre parcel of land known as lot 5, track 12C, located 916 Wando Park Boulevard, identified by TMS number 540000152 by adding duplex residential uses and accessory uses as the only permitted uses and providing development standards for the same.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. A, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee.
Madam Mayor, there was no meeting. I have no, nothing to report on this time.
Thank you. And also annexation.
The committee recommended approval of the, of the three annexation items that appeared earlier on our agenda tonight under the Planning and New Business, representing one home in Commonwealth and Ravens Run subdivisions and 13 lots on a near Harry Robinson Road, Six Mile Road, and Andor Rattling Road. Committee also received an overview of the town's annexation plan. It was adopted in 2012. Also presented to the committee for review were proposed performance standards to measure the success of accomplishing the annexation plan goals. These performance measures are comprised of stated objective for each goal and the inputs and outputs of planned implementation and the final outcomes impact associated with accomplishing each of those plan goals. Finally, Mayor and council members, the committee was apprising a calendar year 2013 annexation plan accomplishment. This concludes my report.
Thank you for that. I'm received. It's in practice.
Madam Mayor, council members, the report only. The committee awarded a contract to Gulf Stream Construction Company for the Wando Park Boulevard improvement project in the amount of $269,304.88. This was a rebid since the first solicitation. There were no bids received. Therefore, Gulf Stream Construction Company is a reasonable bid and within the budget. And other business and informational presentation of the procurement process and procedures will be presented to the committee at next month's committee meeting in the spirit of accountability and transparency. This concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Item number D, Economic Development Committee Report.
Madam Mayor, we did meet. Staff presented a review of the town's economic development strategy, which included an update on our incubator program, which is doing very well. And that was to the benefit of those returning and those new to be aware of our strategy. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance?
Madam Mayor, Finance Committee did meet. We heard a presentation from the Metro News requesting a $20,000 donation in support of the Metro News 50th Anniversary Celebration. After a lot of discussion and some legal concerns and public perception, we decided that we would continue to support the newspaper but could not honor their request. So that concludes my report for finance.
Thank you. Fire?
Madam Mayor, I'm covering for Councilman Santos tonight. I'm for fire, and I'm happy to report that the fire committee did meet. Chief Williams recognized engineer Dennis for 10 years of service and Assistant Chief Whitey Martin for 15 years of service. In addition, very exciting news, the chief presented a site plan, layout and drawings for the new fire station number six. And the new fire station will also include accommodations for police department personnel. I have data here, if anyone's interested, in the number of calls for the month of December. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Resources? No meeting. Patriots Point Development Authority, we did not meet. At some point, though, I think just for grins and giggles, I will give you all a mayoral update of all the people I've met with in the last month. Planning Committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor, follow council members. I have one item to report on. It's a review of Shem Creek dredging project by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Representative. Representative with the Army Corps of Engineer gave a presentation on the Shem Creek dredging project. The project is anticipated to begin in late January with the work lasting 30 to 60 days. In addition to the main channel improvement, the Army Corps of Engineer is providing an opportunity for the town to contract separately with the dredging contractor to extend the boundaries of their work to include the area along the town's Shem Creek Park. Notices were hand delivered to affected residents and businesses by the corps. In addition, notices and an article have appeared in the Post in Korea. And marine mariners will be notified through the Coast Guard. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. So to be clear, the dredging, Mr. Demora, you help me out here. They plan to dredge Shem Creek, but they were not going to come all the way to where. They plan to dredge Shem Creek, but they were not going to come all the way to where our park docks are.
Yes, sir.
Correct? And we were able to negotiate while they're in there, contract for them to dredge in front of all of the town docks.
Correct, sir. We're piggybacking off the federal government contract to dredge an additional 8,500 cubic feet.
And that money is about $275,000?
We believe it's going to come in much less than that, but it's somewhere under quarter million.
Okay, and that's going to be TIF funds to be utilized for that?
Correct, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Garitch, item J, Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Police Legal Judicial Committee, two items, two action items here, one to be taken up later under council new business. Items one and two require council's authorization to apply for public safety grants, if you're so willing.
Make a motion to that effect.
Second.
We have a motion in second to apply for the two grants. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it?
And then later, we have one item under council new business, just fully expanding our mutual aid agreements with one additional public, public safety agency, College of Charleston.
Thank you. Public Services Committee?
Madam Mayor, Public Services Committee did meet. In addition to recognizing Mr. James Williams for 10 years of service, we, the committee itself led a discussion as a matter of information required regarding the present future status of trash and garbage collection in relation to protected town growth. We received a number of statistics. Staff presented information on same-day garbage and debris collection, and the potential for coordination with Charleston County collections of recyclable goods. We were advised that as community growth patterns are expected to affect pickup schedules and so forth, that we will be given more information about what we think might be a very exciting development in our upcoming retreat. More on that later. Additionally, the committee discussed the potential for more formalized and robust program for sanitation workers to conduct community outreach while they're working in the town's neighborhoods. That actually never even dawned on me that, but what we're talking about, existing programs that are in place, but where a sanitation worker, for instance, might literally develop a relationship with a homeowner, and there's patterns that develop, and if they notice something awry, maybe a senior citizen or something like that, that the, that worker might report that, you know, somebody might want to stop by and check on that senior or something like that. And I look forward to moving that forward as the year goes forward. And Mayor Page, that ends my report.
Thank you for that. I appreciate all the hard work you do on public services. It is a big job. Recreation?
Mayor and council, the committee did meet. We did have one facility request from Christ Church, which was approved. The committee also made a motion to approve the request to apply for a South Carolina Park and Recreation Development Grant. It's a $68,000 grant with a 20% match, and we're going to use the money to build the shade buildings. As such, I move the council approved this, approved staff to apply for the 2014 park grant.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor? Any eyes have it?
As far as the Recreation Committee program report, the big heroes were adult tennis. We're up 272 folks in that, and our senior center continues to blossom with 357. We members were up to 2387 members in that facility. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Transportation?
Mayor?
Thank you for it.
Okay. Two action items this evening, and two reported items from last Sunday's meeting. The first action item, committee considered a request by the Marion Brothers Society to name the Mathis Ferry Road Walt Miller Drive Roundabouts Armory Circle. Staff informed the committee of previous approvals for naming of town roundabouts as well as the necessary DOT process for the naming approval. Mr. John C. Evans provided a brief presentation regarding the nearby armory's history of service to the community, and also indicated the society's willingness to fund a dedication ceremony if the name was approved. As such, the committee recommended that town council approve the request to name the Mathis Ferry Road Walt Miller Drive Roundabout Armory Circle, and a motion would be needed in this regard.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Evans, you're in the audience, so would you like to speak on this?
Madam Mayor and Councilman.
Please state your name and the address for the record.
John C. Evans, Jr., 15 Benson Drive, Mount Pleasant, lifetime. Madam Mayor and Council, it's, as gentlemen speaking, I mentioned, I did give a brief history of the armory this year or last year was the 50th year that armory has been at that location, dedicated in 1963. And just for informational purposes, that land belongs to the town, it's on the 99 DoD to the state of that armory, and that 50 years is gone, but we've got 49 more to be there. So, we appreciate approval of our request, and as stated, we will fund a proper dedication at the time that approval is received from DOT.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any eyes carry?
Madam Mayor, the next item is a list of improvement projects we'll talk about. The committee reviewed potential improvement projects for the annual submission through the Charleston County Transportation Sales Tax and CTC funding. Projects relate to intersection improvements, drainage system improvements, and bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Committee discussed the scope, cost, and benefits of many of the projects as well as the potential for funding from these resources. After much discussion, the committee recommended the following project priorities by category be submitted to the agencies for funding consideration, and that's what you see here. It's a pretty extensive list. I won't go into all of the lists, but we have four intersection improvements, Park West Boulevard, Long Point Road, Park West Boulevard again, and then a mastarm installation on Ben Sawyer Rife Range, three drainage improvements that are becoming recommended from the Public Services Department, Sea Farm, Oak Cave, and the Mathis Ferry Road. And then we have quite a few bicycle and pedestrian improvements. These were the rankings coming from, prioritization coming from the committee, being rifle range, that first one we discussed this evening, another rifle range from Hammer to Porches. The next few projects are really fill-in-the-gas type projects, two on Park West, one on Ananapan, one on Ben Sawyer and Stockdale, and then finally Porches Block Road, which is another significant project. Those are what we call our higher-speed, higher-volume projects. There's another list you're going to see here that is really our lower-speed neighborhood type roads, and these are that, these are those projects there. So, this was the priority for funding requests for both of those agencies, the Transportation Sales Tax and the CTC.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nichols?
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm sure that for those of you who were at Transportation Committee meeting, it was a robust discussion, and I know the following is true. All of these are priorities, but somehow it's up to the council as a whole, ultimately, this body, to rank them. At the Transportation Committee meeting, I did state that my personal order is slightly different than the order that's up on here, and I look forward to hearing from the other members of council. I'm convinced, and I was convinced on the day we met last week, that numbers, intersection improvements, numbers one, I'm sorry, what's ranked up there is numbers two and three could easily be numbers one and two in no particular order. Long Point Road and Park West at Bessemer are major issues that I just don't think about. I personally experienced for many, many years, living in Park West over 11 years, and I take Long Point and enter I-526 every morning. I do see, unfortunately, that their pricing is, you know, a triple what some of the other improvements are, but I would ask and look forward to hearing from my fellow council members about their thoughts, particularly with regard to the intersection improvements list.
What's the favor of the council?
Madam Mayor, I enjoyed sitting and listening, great discussion, and sometimes after all my years sitting on transportation, when you, and no fault to Brad, but because he swims in, when you put all this up, and you put up drainage, and you put up pedestrians, and all those things, just like, you know, it's a lot going on. I would just offer to folks, and I met with Brad about this, and it comes down to, you know, you're most bang for your buck and you do your engineering and your good old common sense. We missed it. I think the committee missed it with all due respect on the first one. You've got drainage, great. You've got biking pads, great, but the top one, in my most humble opinion, based on engineering analysis, and as I told Mr. Smith tonight, I live in my truck, it's my office, and we frequent Mount Pleasant all the time. It's a good thing. Hands down, the most, the most bang for your buck is item two, is Long Point Road should be number one. The Park West Boulevard Bessemer should be number two. The Park West at Direct Complex should be number three, and Ben Sawyer Rife Range Mast Angle should be number four. That would be my thought, and I'd be happy to put that in motion, Madam.
Second.
So, I have a motion in second, any further discussion?
Just a point that was made at the committee meeting, that the funding is probably not there for two big projects, so it's going to be tough to get two $700,000 projects over here, and I think that's why the ranking was as it was.
That's a great point, Mr. Gary.
And with all due respect, Paul, we had that discussion, and we agree with your, the ratings. However, when you look at the cost for the different projects, we try to look at the most realistic numbers that could be accommodated.
And I do, and I do look at it like that. I maybe, I might be a hair more optimistic, because to me, it just puts pressure on me and what I think I can do to help, and to help get other council members to help all of a sudden, crack open some additional money to, from other entities to get those done.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of things. And this was being relatively, well, being due to the transportation world and funding for it, I wonder if, if we're being asked for the, without regard to cost, are we supposed to, as a council as a whole, prioritize? Forget it, it was a million dollars, doesn't matter, without, or are you supposed to include in the prioritization the cost, because that's a factor to be taken into consideration as well? And I think that's what the mayor, Tim, was saying, and I don't know that. I do believe that maybe Brad can explain that, and then there's the multi-year aspect. The other thing before you turn over to Brad is, I do think that there's at least a couple of folks here who may not have signed up earlier but may want to speak or they get a chance, but Brad, can you take, tell me a little bit about, is it just prioritization without regard to cost, and, or is cost need to be figured in there because of limited resources? How's that all?
Cost is always figured into the equation, whether it be this council or county council, who's ultimately going to make a recommendation or make a decision based on their staff's recommendation. You've got to remember, we're making this recommendation to county council, they're going to, they're going to actually go through a ranking process also, but typically, you would not get, you know, two and three went to the top, your best chances maybe getting one funded, and it might take a couple of years to get funded, just due to the amount of funding that comes on an annual basis, into 300,000 to 400,000, which is about what you can expect. So, I think that was obviously some of the thinking that the committee had, is the feasibility of getting funded. $2 million worth of need right there at the top, and maybe you get 300,000, 400,000.
Question?
Mr. O'Neal?
You know, I understand, I understand the funding aspect of this. What's confusing to me is that what's number one on this list wasn't even on this list when we looked at it last year. So, now all of a sudden, it's number one. We don't have a funding source identified to do any four of these projects, other than if the county is kind enough to give us some money to do it. And I'd hope that if we agree that Long Point Road and Park West at Bessemer are important enough, that if we get some funding, potentially this county, this council would find it wise to contribute some money out of our general fund to get these projects done if we believe they're that important. So, if we can get any money to do either one of those two projects, I think we both, I think this council agrees that they're tremendously important, so I just don't know how, we got one that's number one that wasn't on the list last year. So, just my opinion.
I'm sorry.
I just believe that we did have an accident there involving a child, and I think it came to our attention through the year, that that was an important intersection, and we had a problem there.
Yeah.
Question for Brad. So, is the current proposal to move, number one would be, it would be two, three, one and four?
Is that the motion?
That's the motion on the table.
I would support that.
Question to Brad, just in general, the three areas we've got here, are they handled separately by county?
They are.
So, there's monies to set aside by them in their little world, that they have monies for this?
Reach category. Yes, sir.
I think we also need to recognize that we're not the only one that's out there
asking for money for these projects. You know, we've got all the other municipalities that's also asking, so it's a competition. And I think the rationale, when we look at, you know, what is priority, we looked at, let's say, two and three, and what the cost of that would be, and how realistic is it that we're going to get that in one swell swoop? That, for two and three, it might be three, four, or five years before we're able to get that. We would have to go back every year. Whereas with number one, the potential to address that one with the 230, you know, maybe in two years.
Or by default, the county may, in their ranking, come down to that one.
Exactly.
And look at the feasibility of funding, so it might just happen by default.
Thank you for that. Mr. Nichols?
As to number one, listening carefully enough, is that a response to the incident involving the young girl?
Pardon?
Because my question is, if it is, there, I believe that there has been a response already. I know that Councilman Glass and I vividly remember seeing you in the newspaper with a device that was installed out there.
I think this more, Mr. Nichols, indicates a delay and backup in traffic for a left-hand turn into the facility, because there's no position for it. And what people end up doing is placing their vehicle where the tail end of it sticks out and it backs up traffic. That, what you're talking about, is the only, that got struck by an automobile, and since then, we have funded and put in a crosswalk with a crossing guard and flashing lights to indicate a safe from the apartment complex over for foot traffic. I think it's two separate issues.
You know, I do appreciate that clarification. I wasn't sure. And then as, to Mr. Councilman O'Neal's point, that number one wasn't even up there last year, I hope this council, make sure I remember what Mr. Garitch's order is here, that Mr. Garitch would prefer, and it was seconded for our discussion purposes, that it go two, three, one, four. Is that what's?
That's the motion.
I'd also ask this council to remember that despite my no vote, we voted to resume the Seacoast Track with 40-something acres of economic development residential. It's going to dump right out to this Long Point Road I-526 intersection, which is just going to make it worse. Let's try to get this project done. I mean, we're not building more units in Park West at the front, but we've got more traffic coming to Long Point and I-526. I'd like to see us get something done.
Number two, right.
Mr. Garitch?
Thank you. Mr. Stokes-Marshall, you and I have been at this a long time, and I hear you lie clear in how the committee arrived at that. And earlier, Mr. Nichols was asking Mr. Morrison, what's the best way to rank these? By importance, could it be funding? When you look at these things, folks, and I don't even use the word game, but it becomes a game when we, when we figure out what we want and we turn it loose, and it goes over there into the big pot, and they, they do the jambalaya, and then, and then they figure out what they want to do. But if you, if you sit there with the mindset, and this is how they are, and it is what it is, if you try to pick one that's pretty realistic, because it's $250,000, just simple math, they will sit there and they will prove that, and then they will say, well, Mount Pleasant's been satisfied now for the next two years for funding because we have 18 other municipalities. It's not something that we like, and it's called fact of like. So, so what we do is we put the emphasis on us to say, no, these are the two most important ones, and now we're going to follow up by making sure you understand just how important they are, and like Mr. O'Neal said, we're going to have to put the pressure on ourselves besides putting, helping influence our friends over there, looking, looking in and squeezing every cent we can find to get those done. And we might find that while you're collectively aggregating funding for those top two that we have in motion, you all of a sudden can knock out that third one that you didn't think you could get. Again, I didn't want to use it for the lack of a better term or word, game, but it is, it is a game within Charleston County with 18 different municipalities and CTC funding.
Thank you. I believe there's someone here signed up to speak on this issue. Two speakers.
Yes, ma'am. Paul Porter.
Bob Brimmer.
Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have two minutes.
My name is Bob Brimmer, address is 2380 Parsonage Woods Lane, Mount Pleasant, which is in the Arlington subdivision, just adjacent to the Bessemer Boulevard intersection. And I just wanted to come tonight. I support the motion that's on the floor to move that project up the list. I mean, it's on the list, so it's obviously a priority. I think everyone here understands this is a problem intersection. And what you may not understand, it's been a problem intersection about three years now, I've been in contact with the council members, the staff, talking about the worsening conditions there, not only for our neighborhood, trying to get in and out of the neighborhood, but for all the traffic from 41, from Dunes West, Park West, due to the schools. There's a parking lot every morning, from Bessemer all the way down to Redwood Lanes, and it's just a, it's a, it's been a daily hassle for all of those residents. We're talking hundreds, maybe thousands of residents who make that trip every day. It delays until the school traffic clears. It's even becoming a problem now in peak hours at the union as well. Now, I'm not a, I'm not a, an expert of funding, but we've been unsuccessful for three years getting funding for this project. So I would rather just go there and ask for what we can get and bank that money, and it may take a couple of years to do it, but if we don't do anything, we're going to be a couple of years later with no money, like we are now. We're talking about just getting something in the bank. I also know, I'm, I'm also on the planning commission, I thank you for the opportunity to serve on that commission, and I will tell you that we have had four projects in the last six months within three tenths of a mile of this intersection.
It's true.
It's going to add up to a hundred more homes right there at that intersection. So I don't know whether we're looking at perhaps some, some contributions from these developers to help on this as well, and that's another option we can look at, as well as the town saying this is an important project that we need to put some money in for, but it's been three years waiting, I don't want any other three years, just sit there every morning and watch hundreds of cars stand still, losing productivity, being late for appointments, working at school. It's not the way to do business, and I think by saying this is a priority and the town can work on this, you can send a message to all these neighborhoods in the north area. If we understand your concern, we'll take some action on it.
Thank you, Mr. Brimmer.
Todd Muschel.
Thanks, Bob. Name is Todd Muschel, I live at 3376 Turmericale Circle, which is in Park West. I also serve on the H.O.A. board for my community, for my neighborhood. I also agree with the motion that was made to bump the priority up of the Bessemer intersection. When Park West was built, the town wanted Park West Boulevard to be a thoroughfare to divert traffic off of the 41 and 17 intersection, the town got what it wanted, but the, in a way, be able to handle all the traffic that's coming through. The Bessemer Road and Park West Boulevard intersection is an absolute nightmare. I think it's beyond inconvenient, it's a safety issue, the way the traffic gets backed up, waiting for that left turn. I think it's a concern to keep putting the project off because there's not money for it, or because you want to have priorities, if you keep putting off, it never gets done. And I think that's the concern and the danger. I don't know if this is the funding mechanism that would be appropriate to handle that, but what I do know is that as citizens, we elect our mayor and our council to solve problems, and as citizens, I think what we're asking for is a solution to this problem, and not a general, we're going to think about it, we're going to work on it, but something specific, a specific solution in a specific time frame. I think it's reasonable for us to ask for that, and as, as a citizen and a representative of my community, that's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muschel. That's all that are signed up to speak on this. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
We have the motion restated.
Can we restate the motion, Mr. Garich?
Sure. The motion is to approve the fund, approve direct staff to pursue the funding of the items listed, but to change the intersection improvements such that item two is now one, item three is now two, and item one is three, and four remains as four.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes here?
Transportation has submitted, I'm interested in it, as the changes.
Yes. Can we have you submit a list with the changed rankings for the record, Christine?
Both, please, the old and the new.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Two, two real quick report items. The committee also discussed potential use of transportation impact fees for bus shelters, and they reviewed ongoing projects.
Appreciate that. Water Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, report only. The Bessemer Commission meeting presented Mount Pleasant Water Works employee Eddie Panetta with the resolution appreciation for his service and volunteer efforts while in the Philippines. On a personal matter, Mr. Panetta graciously stayed and worked and donated his time to Water Emissions International in order to help provide clean, safe water down there after the typhoon. At the January Water Supply Committee meeting, the committee received information pertaining to the elimination of the $5 delinquent payment charge. Customers now have seven more days after their due date before a $20 late payment is applied. The committee received information pertaining to the rerouting of meter reading and billing cycles. The benefits include time-saving and reduced mileage, miles driven. About 28,000 of the 35,000 customers' accounts are affected by the change. The changeover will be complete after February, and information about the change and its benefits can be found on the Mount Pleasant Water Works website. concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Water Supply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to report only. January, Mount Pleasant Water Works Committee meeting, the personnel and cost recovery committee met. Cost recovery committee was presented an extension, extensive information about the asset management program and the future cost, and discussed changes to the cost recovery policy. The proposed changes will become, will come before water supply in March. Mount Pleasant Water Works would also like to extend a heartfelt, grateful appreciation to our, our very own Martine for the efforts she makes to share public information through our communications channels. Martine, it's greatly appreciated. Madam Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you for that. That ends the committee report, moving on to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor. Announcing openings, one on the farmer's market advisory board, and other on the historical commission, and announcing one to be announced shortly on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you for that. Under council new business, number A is a?
You'll be happy to, Mayor. This is one that expands our mutual aid agreements with the surrounding law enforcement agencies. This is one with the College of Charleston, it's a resolution to be in consideration.
Motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
Any questions or discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye. Resolution 14011.
Item number two under new business, discussion regarding the height of the proposed Wando River, South Carolina Highway 41, bridge replacement. Mr. Garich, would you like to take that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, member of council. September of 2012, you guys had a unanimous vote come before you from your transportation committee. Mr. Smith, you were not here, I was not here, nor was Mr. Santal, so all of y'all somewhat familiar with it. It was eight-year course on to do everything you could to keep the height of a bridge 35 feet or lower, in fixed span. That situation has, just last week, DOT has awarded a design contract to a contractor to move forward with a bridge where it could be possibly 55 feet high. Now, why do I say all that to you, to help you out? Again, every entity known around here, every government entity, we were requested not to exceed 35 feet. We were told by DOT, with all due respect, that we understand, we will do everything to grant your wishes, but we don't think the Coast Guard is going to allow that. The way that process works is once DOT deems the height, then they'll apply for a permit. That permit is getting ready to apply for, to coast, to the Coast Guard, and they will have a final say-so on this bridge. While this council did vote on it over a year ago in September, and everyone has moved on, a wonderful group by the name of Charleston Moves, and I'm sure you've heard of them, who had great success with the Ravenel Bridge, of getting the hike and, and ped trail on it, they became very concerned with the 41 bridge, because of the way it's laid out. Its construction will have two lanes at first, with a large median, two six-foot sidewalks, and in the future, it will go to four lanes, which allows us, shortens up our median, gives us the two six-foot sidewalks for bikes to go on. Charleston Moves said, guys, wait a minute, let's change this bridge deck. Take out two six-foot sidewalks, just give us the 10-foot hiker-biker trail. They contacted me, and I said, listen, the town's already approved in their, in their biking trail plan, an eight-foot wide trail on 41 going up to the bridge, it makes all the sense in the world. Why, I got you, Charleston Moves, how about help us out or something, because it's moved on beyond us, and we really need your help. We really would like to lower the height of this bridge. So they have called a meeting this coming Friday with all these various entities, and I will be attending that meeting, it's at 75 Calhoun, it's at 8:30 in the morning, it's open to the public. Charleston Moves will be conducting that meeting, they'll have the Coast Guard there, they invited DOT, Senator Scott's office, Congressman Sanford's office, all those people, because Charleston Moves will tell you, it's never too late. So I'm not going to ask us to revisit our motion, the motion was the right motion, Brad did a good job, DOT said, we'll go for the 35 feet, however, whatever permit you get, we have to go with it. I'm not going to sit here and tell you how crazy all that sounds. But what I would like to delve into tonight, where we just missed it, and that's okay, where once it's finalized on this bridge, where she's going and how high she's going to be, there's going to be an opportunity there for access to the water and access to the land. We've all talked about it, and talked about it, I was on council before, but we don't have a defined motion. So I would like to move that we direct our staff to convey to the government entities, whether it be the Coast Guard, SE DOT, most likely SE DOT, that any available potential access that we get to land and all water, where the land and water become available, we wish to pursue that as the first right of the town of Mount Pleasant. That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. And Paul, I really appreciate all your work on this. I think we all realize that not only a 35-foot bridge is to scale and fitting and suited to that area of natural beauty, and also a bike-ped path that is separated with protection permanently is, is, has to be included. So I appreciate your leadership, I regret I can't be there with you on Friday. I have motion, second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to hear the end of that, Paul.
The end?
Yeah.
And there's no end yet, it's great.
But I mean, what, what did you mean by the end of the request of the motion?
End of my motion was to, and I did not come up with a detailed plan, other than to say, the best way to put it is to say, because the bridge is probably going to be moved to the east, the new bridge.
But what did you mean about the first right of the land?
Oh, I'm sorry. And pardon my, my uses of wording, it just simply says that when that land is deemed, it is sitting there idle, we want, in all sense, first right of refusal to negotiate with SE DOT for the land and access to the water, for better use of, for better use of the land.
On our side.
On our side.
Excuse me. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Who owns the land?
No one owns the land yet, because the right of ways haven't all been completed.
It's the state owns all the land.
Okay. Now, you indicated council, previously, we voted on the 35 feet, and DOT, the South Carolina DOT, they're aware of that.
You voted, you voted stating that you wished for it to be 35 feet and a little higher, but you understood that DOT could only go with the permit that the Coast Guard would grant them, which could be up to 55 feet.
Understand. No problem with that. I'm just not comfortable or understand the significance of, if that is what has already happened, why are we now moving to make a commitment to go after land?
Oh, okay, well, I'll answer that question. It's just that, right now, it's not clear. In other words, DOT, if they're not contacted by any, any government entity, that property becomes available, and it will sit there, and it will be idle. All I'm saying in my motion is that when that property becomes open and is sitting there idle, we want to talk to you about the future, and how we, as a town of Mount Pleasant, can utilize that land to our advantage, just like we did with the Ravenel Bridge. If you don't tell them, they'll sit out there and say, I didn't, I didn't, you did tell me.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah. I want to thank Councilman Garich for bringing this back to the forefront. There's been a couple of newspaper articles in the fall season that I'm sure all of us recall about this as well. I can recall attending a meeting, and I believe it was at Park West, fairly well-attended. I can recall voting on the, you know, 35, 45, 55. It's never been explained to me clearly by anybody, and I don't mean this as, but when I said, why does it have to be 55 feet? The answer to that has been lost in the midst of memorandums that I either can't see, don't exist, or refer to outlook of regulations or laws or that I cannot find. So we had an opportunity just, because I love for it not to be 55 feet, it doesn't need to be 55 feet, 35 feet sounds cheaper to me, for instance. I like that idea as well. You know, I've heard crazy things, well, there's a guy up river, and he's got a sailboat that's 55 feet. I go, well, he's probably having a hell of a time getting under it right now. What's that mean? If we, if we bought a 65-foot sailboat, and we have to build it to 65 feet? None of that makes any sense to me whatsoever. What does make sense to me is I ran into, and we were all there, the local head person of our Coast Guard, Rick, he lives in Mount Pleasant, and I looked him right in the eye and had a conversation with him. And I said, Rick, it's, it's sort of been pointed at you guys, the Coast Guard, that somehow that you've imposed this 55-foot requirement, and that everyone had to fall in, in order to get the bridge. And mind you, for me, I want the bridge. It's a safety issue. My gosh, you go over that thing, it is scary. You deviate six inches and everything changes. And I said, Rick, does it have to be 55 feet? And he looked at me, goes, Chris, I, I just spoke with Lindsey Graham, I just spoke with Tim Scott, and Mark Sanford, I just told them, the Coast Guard hasn't mandated, this was his words, words that he backed up, hasn't mandated it to be 55 feet. But no one's even really asked us formally to, to render anything. And that was eye-opening. So I, I, here's my wish list. I want, I want the bridge to be 35 feet. We were basically, it was basically implied to us during our last vote, well, 55 feet, it has to be 55 feet or, or nothing. Well, I care about the safety of all our citizens, our Berkeley County neighbors, and everyone who goes past there, we need the bridge. 35 feet makes all the sense to me in the world, and I concur with Councilman Garich, I am super concerned with what goes on underneath that bridge afterwards. Water access up in that area is critical. It's such a beautiful area, and it's just impossible unless you're one of the relatively few unfortunate to, to get water access up there, whether it's put in boat, or you bring your family out, and you just enjoy wildlife. So I'm appreciative of what I've heard, I appreciate the merit of your leadership and your statement that 35 feet makes all the sense in the world, and it, it's less expensive, it's less intrusive, it accomplishes the safety goal, and underneath it, on our side, the best we can within our means afterwards. So I hope we all get behind this.
I just close if I tell you, there cannot be a more tenacious group than Charleston Moves being involved in this and taking the lead, and it allows us, as elected bodies from here in Charleston, Berkeley County, to step in, so we don't have to get into it with DOT or the Coast Guard. Our message has been clear from everywhere, Charleston Moves gets it, and they're good at what they do.
I do want to remind you, Mayor, that I talked with my friend, Councilman Callahan, who reminded me to remind everybody that Berkeley County is going to have the, at least the eight-foot bike-ped pass all the way, all the way from that bridge, all the way to Daniel Line. That's exciting for me to hear. So, outstanding.
We have motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? B, old business, final reading. Oh, wait a minute, yes.
Yes, this is due consideration, council, the final reading for the tolling services, the new fee schedule and procedures.
What's the final reading?
Section 8.
Have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Final reading, ordinance number 13081, ordinance to amend chapter 112, section 11233, in Mount Pleasant Court of Ordances, to change the payment procedures and the fee schedule for tolling services.
Thank you. Item number two, final reading.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 13082, ordinance to amend the budget for the town of Mount Pleasant. of Mount Pleasant for fiscal year commence in July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014.
We have a need to go into executive session to discuss the personnel issues.